Welcome everyone to our June 28 Town Council meeting. Before we begin, I do need to now move the evacuation masks in case you forgot. In the event of an emergency, we'll exit out two side doors. We're in the front here. You guys can exit the building and meet up at the administration building. And now we can begin with the pleasurable silence for our man of service. In this instant, flagrant, the United States of America, and to the Republic where the Constitution stands, one nation, having all indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, so we are still in the hybrid mode, and there are folks that won't be participating remotely. So the drill is if you're calling in on the phone, star nine will indicate you have a question. Star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone. If you're on Zoom meeting, there's an icon to indicate raise your hand. When called upon, please state your name and address for the town clerk. And that you will begin.
Ms. Jukusa, present. Bummer?
Present.
Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
And Mr. Ankr.
Here.
Right, it was definitely. Okay, I do not have an executive summary, so we're gonna jump right into our presentation recognition. And this year, it's our Portman Report. I am glad that you're all most useful here tonight in order to present this award. The award is going to our Portman Emergency Management COVID-19 Vaccine Response Team. I think without their efforts in the past fifteen, sixteen, we'd probably be in a lot different shape. They definitely rose to the people working with volunteers and really put the providing services for I know we'll probably not mention all of them tonight because it's awesome. But I do want to thank all those folks who contributed and helped our town during our time of need. Again, tonight we do have a great very That means you all get the title, you all have the house of thanks. They don't get one of you. They build a wall, they build a wall. So if you will allow me, I will Portman Emergency Management COVID-19 Vaccine Response Team. Whereas, Portman would recognize certain individuals who business that consistently demonstrated excellence, professional and community leadership. And whereas, the town enforcement has blessed many volunteers who by their actions improved the quality of life in our town. Whereas, during the months of December 2020, 2021, the daily COVID-19 death rate reached all-time highs. While the COVID-19 death rate reached half a million souls死亡 Portman President had friends support family contact contract COVID-19. Some passing away from this disease, presidents were reluctant to go out, businesses were failing, town officials had restricted availability. Schools had a hybrid model, and whereas, school volunteers of Portman Emergency Management COVID-19 Vaccine Response Team five vaccination clinics. Five school personnel, and most recently our base of students. Selfish, very community-minded citizens. Unselfish and very community-minded citizens, heroes professionally professionally, enthusiastically conducted at least twenty-two clinics and moved over five thousand two hundred vaccinations. Their efforts directly contributed to the reduction of COVID-19 rates in Portman area and very likely saved lives, certainly helped to prevent the spread of the disease. Whereas, nation, eight of Rhode Island and the town of Portland rebounding back local restaurants are returning back to normal sports programs, driving grandparents are pugging family members without masks, and life in general achieving While use of masks certainly helps, but no one can deny that the vaccination of our population more than anything else has allowed our nation, state, and towns to reenact. Whereas, volunteers of Portman Emergency Management COVID-19 Vaccine Response Team outstanding contributions to Portman, creating vibrant and active lifestyle. And whereas, the 2021 Portman Award recipients are volunteers of Portman Emergency Management COVID-19 Vaccine Response Team. Now therefore, we resolve, Portman Town Council extends its sincere thanks, congratulations, and a huge debt of credit on behalf of our Portman community. The word on the street is this West is sunny and just fine. It's power microphones that are still not green. All right. Moving on. Present agenda. The places. To approve this present, Keith Hamilton. Art Ryan, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be sitting out the Board of License Commission. David Heather's license, Mobile Food Establishment to new license, Laura Sebastian, A. Tom McQuan, Ice Cream, Fifty-Nine, Woodmont Street, problem, one day. Keith Hamilton, second. All those in favor.
Aye. Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes. Our next motion to adjourn is the Board of Licenseer License Commissioners. Okay. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Now, we have our minutes. Our Art Ryan, who moved to approve this presentation. Hamilton, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
And Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. On to our Town Administrator Report.
Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID-19, all state-run COVID-19 test sites will be closed Sunday, July 4th and Monday, July 5th. You can schedule a COVID-19 test before or after the holiday online at the four R I dose site. The regular hours for tests will resume on Tuesday, July 6th. Far to the Open Meetings Act, the Governor's Office has extended the executive order allowing virtual meeting through July 24th. Additionally, during House debate on the fiscal year 22 budget, an amendment was passed specifically allowing the governor to extend the virtual meetings executive orders through September 1st, 21. Public bodies can continue to meet virtually or in a hybrid format such as this and may not return to in-person only meetings without alternative access so long as the executive order remains. With respect to the Ann Hutchinson Building, CTA Architecture has completed a draft analysis of the building. And we will meet with them to review this report this week. And we hope to have them present their analysis to the council at your next meeting. With respect to Old Mill Lane, the Algonquin inspection work at Old Mill Lane has been completed. And National Grid has removed their equipment from the property. Algonquin is currently reviewing the data collected during that inspection. And that can take up to fifty days to complete. National Grid will keep the matting, the surface matting, and the fence in place in case Algonquin requires additional work to pay for further data review. The Energy Facility Site Board is now on receipt of the National Grid application for a license to mobilize and conduct energy operations at the Old Mill site from November to April as needed to ensure the supply of natural gas to the island. The application has been documented and can be accessed via the Rhode Island Public Utilities, PUC, website. Our solicitor has filed a notice of intervention by the town of Portman. And this president, Eric Portman, report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Moving on to removals, resignations, and appointments. We do have a letter from the Chair of the Harbor Commission seeking removal of three commissioners or three members, sorry, that have either left or have not been attending meetings. Those are David Anderson, Brandon Kidd, and Brendan Donnigan. Keith Hamilton, motion to remove Mr. Anderson, Mr. Kidd, and Mr. Donnigan. Art Ryan, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have appointments to the dog park. We have a reappointment of Ms. Caroline Bunny Miller and Ms. Jane Reason. Keith Hamilton moved to approve both three points. Art Ryan, second. Of course, my answer. Fine. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a reappointment to the Glen Manor House Authority for Algonquin housing.
Motion to reappoint Algonquin Dowsky.
Art Ryan, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the Harbor Commission. We have a applicant, Lawrence Walsh, for the Harbor Commission. Art Ryan, move to appoint Lawrence Walsh to the Harbor Commission. Keith Hamilton, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
And Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to full business. First item is our monthly finance.
To the May financials, as of the end of May, the town is down one point six percent through the current fiscal year. The year-to-date general fund revenues, including period-end revenues, are at ninety-three percent of budgeted revenues. General fund expenditures are eighty-nine percent of budgeted expenditures, while our year-to-date was thirty-eight percent. At this time, we anticipate ending the year with a surplus primarily due to part of your top seven uses of the budget and unbudgeted revenue for the quarter. There is also a reduction in the projected legal expenses for the fiscal year ending June 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next, motion to proceed and place on file. Keith Hamilton, Art Ryan, second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bummer?
Aye.
And Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next item is final approval of the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget.
It's actually 2022.
I just read it.
Yeah. Ask prior question.
This is why I read the 2022 budget. Recite those. Yes. We're half of service. And, well, as you know, we did conclude our public hearing on June 9th. During that meeting, residents agreed that raised a few questions that he was looking for some answers on. The public hearing is closed, but I will provide answers to the question. And then we will move on. This is, you know, this public hearing is closed, but I want to provide you an answer. I think you had a couple of questions, so I'll try to make sure I address all of them. The first question was regarding the part payment calculation and how that calculation was generated in the budget. It was a question about the 6.75, which is our town target based on our retirement plan. And he pointed out that he believed the calculation was based on we verify that. We did speak to our advisor and that in fact, they did rate of return. That 6.4 rate of return translates into the higher art payment that is in the budget. That decision that was made could have come before this council. The town was not aware of it, and we should have been aware of it, and we should have at least been aware of it prior to the budget. I understand their logic that the pension plan was underperforming and that it was needed to make sure that we were funding our pension plan. Although that decision should have been made by this council. So just appreciate you for pointing that out. We are taking actions with our pension committee to also review performance of our pension fund. We will also be talking to our advisor about that decision that they made, not advising us. All that at a future date. But we obviously take this very serious. That information should have come before us from our advisor, not from our public. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. There was also a question about with the overpayment, that say overpayment, but would that that payment remain in the part column? Yes, it will. We are not going to reality that money. There was a comment, or I mean, it was a comment more than a question. Could we transfer some of that money to other accounts? No, we're not. As I stated earlier, I believe ten of that 6.4% was to make sure that our pension funds be funded. They identified a performance measure that was, the portfolio was underperforming. And this was a mechanism to add more money into our retirement plan and make sure it was funded down the road. Obviously, we will reevaluate our portfolio moving forward. Ideally, we want to make sure that we're maximizing our returns and minimizing that art payment. So if that did not happen, but we are aware of it and we take this decision very seriously. Again, just appreciate you for bringing that to our attention. So getting closer, yes. I'm not, I'm not repeating.
I think they did already, like it's coming through on the internet.
All right.
You guys can hear okay back there. Oh, yeah. I think, oh, we put it on the internet, so.
Sorry for those at home, but I could repeat that if I had. So now, we do have our budget ordinance. Town clerk is did we do we need a all we need a final approval?
Yeah.
Informants relating to the levy and the collection of taxes. We are deemed that the Town Council of the Town Enforcement at a regular Town Council meeting legally established on the 28th day of June, 2021, hereby levy and orders the collection of one, a property tax on the variable real estate and tangible personal property. Said levy to be based on the assessment made as of the 31st day of December, 2020, as subsequently adjusted for new construction or damage or destroyed buildings according to law. Two, an excise tax on all registered motor vehicles and trailers. Said levy to be prorated over the calendar year prior to the year in which said exercises are letting and billed. Same year, here and after, may refer to as calendar year of proration. As provided by section forty-four dash thirty-four dot one dash one of the general laws of Rhode Island, a five thousand total exemption is applied. Total taxes prior to any adjustments for subsequent increases or decreases in assessment shall be a sum of not more than fifty-nine million, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Said taxes for ordinary expenses and charges for the payment of interest and indebtedness in the whole or in the part of said town, for the payment of the town portion of the state tax and for other purposes as specified in the budget and warrant items approved at this meeting as authorized by law. The said property tax shall be apportioned upon a hundred percent of the assessed valuation as determined by the tax assessor on the 31st day of December, 2020, at twelve o'clock midnight, according to law. Any subsequent adjustments to the assessed valuation shall be apportioned on a prorata basis during the calendar year according to law. And said excise tax shall be apportioned on a prorata basis during sorry, yep, during the calendar year proration according to law. Above amount shall be exclusive of veterans' exceptions and for those for the elderly as provided at law at the time of tax rolls are certified. The maximum first property levy of fifty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-two dollars does not exceed the four percent tax levy cap. The fiscal year 2022 tax levies shall be excluded, shall have excluded motor vehicle excise taxes for the purpose of determining the tax levy pursuant to article eleven of 2017 H. five-one-seven-five, sub-A, as amended. The tax assessor shall upon completion of said assessment be certified and signed the same and delivered to and deposit the same in the office of the town clerk. The town clerk on receipt of said assessment shall forthwith make a copy of the same and deliver it to the finance director in his slash her capacity as treasurer, who shall forthwith issue and fix to said copy a warrant under his or her hand directed to the collector of taxes of said town, commanding him or her to proceed and collect taxes. Said taxes, the persons who receive, liable therefore. Said taxes shall be due and payable on and between the first day of July and the first day of September, 2021. And all taxes remaining unpaid on the said first day of September, 2021, shall carry and so collect it a penalty under the rate of twelve percent and upon real estate and tangible property, personal property, and a penalty of twelve percent per annum upon registered motor vehicles and trailers. Said taxes may be paid in four installments. The first installment should be twenty-five percent on or before the first day of September, 2021, and the remaining installments as follows. Twenty-five percent on the first day of December, 2021. Twenty-five percent on the first day of December, first day of March, 2022. Twenty-five percent on the first day of June, 2022. A grace period of seven days will be extended for each installment period. Each installment of taxes if paid on or before the last day of each installment period successfully and in order, shall be free from any charge for interest. And the first installment or any succeeding installments of taxes is not paid by the last day of the respected installment period or periods as they occur. Then the whole tax or remaining unpaid balance of the tax, as the case may be, shall immediately come due and payable and carry and so collect it penalty at the rate of twelve percent per annum. Providing, however, that the options to pay said taxes in equal order of installments shall not apply to any tax levy in the amount not in excess of one hundred dollars, in which case the tax shall be payable in a single installment. Whenever there is a subsequent adjustment to said assessment because of new construction or damage or destroyed buildings resulting in additional and additional orders increased, taxes shall be administered, being payable and collectible in accordance with the statutes forty-four dash five dash thirteen dot thirteen and forty-four dash five dot thirteen dot fourteen of the general laws of Rhode Island as amended and any ordinances in the town enforcement. We are deemed further that the Town Council of the Town Enforcement at a regular Town Council meeting on the 28th of June, 2021, hereby orders that the tax assessor of this town shall assess an apportion of property tax on the inhabitants and the variable real estate and tangible personal properties of the Town Enforcement as of the 31st day of December, 2020, at twelve o'clock midnight, according to law. Assess and approach an apportion to adjustments to property taxes on new construction or removal of damage or destroyed buildings in the Town Enforcement according to law, and apportion an excise tax on the inhabitants and the registered motor vehicles and trailers of the Town Enforcement on a prorata basis for the calendar year of proration according to law. Ordained that the budget amended carrying the gross appropriation of sixty-nine million, seven-four thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars together with the following in the accounting of refunds, state aid, federal aid, or other credits not specifically stated in the foregoing budget, that the town treasurer be directed to credit such funds to the department concerned. And such funds are hereby appropriated by the Town Council at a regular meeting on June 28th, 2021 for the use of departments concerned, provided, however, that such recipients for school department budgets be accepted. Ordained that the town treasurer is authorized on behalf of the Town Enforcement to issue notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes levied in this fiscal year as authorized by section forty-five dash twelve dash four of Rhode Island general laws, nineteen fifty-six, as amended. The outstanding principal amount of which at any time much shall be, shall not exceed the amount the amount committed by section forty-five dash twelve dash four of the Rhode Island general laws, nineteen fifty-six. Notes shall be signed by the town treasurer in his or her capacity as director of lineups and countersigned by the president of the Town Council. The notes shall contain such items, conditions, and details and bear such dates, date or dates, and mature at such time or times from the date of issuance as the town treasurer may determine. Ordained that the books and accounts of Ordained that the books and accounts of all departments handling town funds be audited by the state bureau audit or by independent certified public accountant for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-one. Ordained further that all monies collected by the town clerk and the tax collector be transferred over to the town treasurer monthly or at more frequent intervals as accumulations may warrant. Gross appropriation, sixty-nine million, seventy-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Less estimated school receipts of three million, eight hundred thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Less estimated miscellaneous general fund receipts, six million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, leading to be raised by taxes, fifty-nine million, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-six dollars. Less estimated prior years prorated collections of one million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Plus estimated uncollectible spread of one million, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, sorry, one that, one million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Maximum tax levy, fifty-nine million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Kevin M. Atiyar and town council president.
Thank you. T. Campbell says motion to approve the budget ordinance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. On my side of it. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Mr. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Barmire?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Onto new business. Support for the raise application submitted by the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority for the Mount Hill Bridge cable and acreage dehumification process project. What you have for us tonight is a letter that I want to thank Mr. Croly for helping grab. The Bridge Turnpike Authority is seeking a grant and they asked if the town, if I could provide a letter. I suggest that I would do it on behalf of the council and I would bring it to the council to get the council's support on the request. So I'm just asking for approval tonight to submit this letter in support of this application to the Bridge Turnpike, which will hopefully help with the rehabilitation of the cable system on the bridge. Move to approve with the request that is also for our board professional help. All those in favor?
Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Barmire?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Onto business number two. It's the proposed fiscal year twenty transportation improvement program for the state of Rhode Island. What you have for us tonight, obviously, the ever revised tip, Mr. Croly had gone through and probably figured how it impacted town projects and he provided us that, that feedback. There is a public comment period. All public comments needs to be made by June tenth. Obviously, we have another meeting to, uh,
You mean July tenth?
I'm sorry, July tenth. I said June, uh, July tenth, I'm sorry, yeah. Comments are due, I'm sorry, comments are due by July twelfth. So we not have time to get those in before our next council meeting. So I wanted to, you know, see if we had any input as counselors on comments. And if Mr. Croly did an excellent job of identifying how these modifications are going to impact each of our, each of our projects. Personally, in reviewing it, I, I think the question that I would have is kind of a fundamental question of what, what is the basis of the, of these decisions to extend or delay our projects? If you see in the history, some of these projects have already been extended and now they're being pushed out further and some significant, you know, some of these are very poor projects for the town. Eastman Road, Westman Road, Spray Street safety is really being pushed out. So I know it's a public comment period, that we're able to submit some questions. I, I don't think we can do much with the, the projects that are here. These are, these are our town projects that they have been tracking for us. But I, I think fundamentally, a question that we should, if we have to ask is why are our projects being, or what's the reasoning for your projects being pushed out? You know, we don't have the comments by counselors, just want to get your input.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good question. I mean, there, there's some pretty big high priority projects out there that have been, by now, delayed over a decade. They're not even in design, so we're, that get away from that after getting done, which is pretty disheartening. I would also argue that, you know, we've had this discussion before, but there are some projects here that, that shouldn't happen together. You know, the repaving and sidewalks of Eastman Road should probably happen at the same time as the shared use path that's in the, the, what they renamed, the transportation alternatives thing. I will say thank you to counselor Ujibusa, though I think, thanks to her, we do have some money allocated to project nine thousand four, so at least that is a start to something. But we, we went out, you know, and, and Ms. Ujibusa went, got funding for us to keep the ball rolling and hopefully that builds some momentum to get additional funding for projects. But, um, yeah, it's concerning to see all our projects just keep slipping further and further down the timeline.
I would agree that, I mean, fundamentally, we're, I don't think we're involved or even notified of the process. Projects, you know, they, there's input on projects, they go before a committee and then, I don't know, they, they get shuffled around. I'm sure that it's, a lot of it might be related to funding. There could be current projects that are being overextended. But, but for us as counselors and for the citizens enforcement, I mean, these are priority type projects. I mean, it's Eastman Road, it's Westman Road, it's road safety items, sidewalks, these are all very important projects that, you know, we've, we've been told if relayed the message, hey, it's going to start next year. Now, next year is three more years down the road. I'm, I'm not sure there's, there's much that can be done. There's a funding shortage, but we'd like to at least know what's the process for these determination and why. I mean, maybe there's, you know, maybe they're behind on the design. I don't really know. But it would be nice if, if we could get some type of feedback as to why our projects are, are being pushed off.
An interesting question also is, and I don't know if this information is really available or somebody just needs to sit down and do the homework, but geographically speaking, how much money gets spent where in the state and when was the last time that there was significant write-off development in Portsmouth?
Find out. And the most recent projects were to be aligned to the basin in Park Avenue. Repaving Route twenty-four. They did repave, which is shopable because they went as far as Locust on Westman Road, but they're going to repave it again in Quonham Middleway and they can rest with them. Hopefully they'll figure that part out when they get there or by the time they get there before, by the year they do, they're taping it. But the, the investment hasn't been large. They have the large, the best safety upgrade for Eastman Road with the new sidewalks, personal area with the sidewalks. To me on this list, the two that jumped out to me the most are Eastman Road's, Eastman Road's condition is horrible and for somebody who walks Spray Street almost every day and our kids walk up and down that street going to school, sidewalks on at least one side of that street are desperate.
And you're making the point, repaving the northern part of Eastman Road and Route twenty-four, it, it presents a good opportunity to continue to work south and, and not have a ten or twelve year gap between them.
I mean, being, being the gateway to Newport, they have, everybody goes to Newport for vacation, has to go down Straight or Westman Road, has to go home, get their car fixed when they get done visiting Newport.
So are the comments that may be going to be submitted tonight, going to be the questions going to be submitted to, uh, no, well, it's not write-off actually.
It's, it's statewide traffic improvement program. Right. I, I think what we, I think, I think it would be reasonable for us to submit at least that question about why, or can we get an explanation? I mean, I don't have the right language tonight, but at least a, a, an explanation or a basis for why our projects are being shifted out because, you know, as a candidate council, we're, you know, we're interacting with the public, we're making, you know, we're providing information and now we're told, you know, project that was supposed to possibly start last year is now not going to start twenty twenty-eight, which is Spray Street. So, you know, that's, you know, that's kind of disheartening.
That project's supposed to start here?
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
Two questions. Uh, one, who's our primary liaison with the state transportation planning board?
Been through asking if we have a specific liaison for you to set the answer to now. It depends on what the issue is and then it gets delegated to the appropriate department to tell.
So they don't communicate with anybody specific in town? It's just, there isn't a, like a constant line of communication?
It's not the issue.
That the council can request a hearing with them?
Well, there's, there's two hearings tomorrow night, Wednesday. So we, maybe, I'd be more than happy to go tomorrow night at five o'clock in there against the town hall. We have a list of questions that we started to see if they can answer, if they can pack this for us. I think if you make, if you, I think during the public hearing, I think all they will is just take your questions. Correct. They want to get active. Yeah. I mean, that, that might be the best opportunity. But we can also put our questions in writing and forward it all to our state officials to pass them along. The beauty of politics around the early town council, given that somebody else has a brand next to their name, they jump past. If you get to a statewide officer, they'll jump to a shady ones. So. So at this point then, to the gentleman, you could go to Exeter. Is that what you said? Now again, I'm sorry, now again, Exeter. You got a couple of answers. Now again. Or, or one or the other, either that or, or, uh, very, very deep problems.
Can you ask if they would identify their criteria for moving things around? And also point out that we're wondering why this was brought to me by constituent Metacom Bristol, it's been resurfaced, they're going to resurface Aquinian Avenue in Middletown and Airport Road in Warwick, and they are not nearly as bad as Eastman Road.
Aquinian, like, I think, well, like Metacom is going to be, what are, I don't know, that's a combination of the water department and the paint department.
I live in Bristol, I don't remember Metacom ever being as bad as Eastman Road.
I'm just saying, like, your combination of the fact that they just re-did all the water mindset. Metacom has a function of the water main replacement. I believe Aquinian Gap was also a sewer project in the town, of Middletown. So that, that could be while those were prepared, or that, I'm not sure. So.
And also we, here at the town level, did ask for an Eastman Road safety audit and a Westman Road safety audit, and it would make sense that some of those things that they identified as short-term items be coordinated with the chip.
Yes, they are funded separately, though, right?
I understand that the funding is separate, but it just seems silly that they come out to take care of one little problem.
And ignore the whole.
And ignore other parts of it. So for example, I believe there is a little piece of good news that we will be getting light at Litten Lane, is that very shortly?
It's in planning right now, so it could be as early as twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. So, I mean, if they're going to work on that and they're going to work on that whole section on Eastman Road that connects Union to, to anybody at any point, which, uh,
They put in those, uh, crosswalks to nowhere, so that was helpful.
Exactly. I mean, it doesn't make sense to, I understand there are different pools of money, but they are used to different pools of money and they should coordinate to save the state, you know, sending money unnecessarily. And I believe that's just one of the things. Yeah, and to your point, all those little projects are great, but what we really need to get done is fixing Snapper.
Right. No, understood. They, they said that they couldn't, that they were a bit narrower in scope than we would want and for sure that's happening. But, um, you know, again, they're arguing that they have different plots of money. We tapped into certain plots by asking them to do these safety audits. I think that was a really good thing for us to do. It does also establish us as having a history of asking for reports about problems which might help us get access to the federal infrastructure funding as it comes through because everybody wants to know that you're not just throwing random things at them, that you have a history of asking for things. So I, I think, you know, in some ways, we're looking at this from the outside, but we're doing the best we can to tap into every single finance source. And I, I mean, part of the reason I broke the grant for that blue light path is that we were informed by Representative Sisley that there was money available. And so I thought, what the heck, you know, we, we'll take some and luckily we got it. But it, it's sad that it has to work like that or it's so piecemeal. And, but in any case, question, ask for criteria and ask that they be published so that we can understand how things are being ordered. Thanks.
Thank you. Got a question, if there's anything. I'm just hoping to hear again if you can hold that there. Okay. All right. So let's move on. Now we have quarters bonus. Proceed, please not file. Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Barmire?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Enter.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. And we have future meetings. Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we take our annual summer recess the twenty-fourth of August. A beautiful, wonderful, thoughtful, diligent. I'm ready to that, that we, that the policy and hopefully the staff gets down to fifteen months. A motion to cancel. Obviously. How much you have? Oh, the, the, the most. Who's Kelly? Who is Kelly? All those in favor?
Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Barmire?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Ujibusa?
I, but I have a question. Are the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh.
Well, that, that will come back to you right now then, to you. Yeah, I don't think it will be ready for July. We want to make sure that all the maps are in there this time. So as soon as that is done, we're paying somebody overtime to go through, over it to ensure that those. And we will get, get an update on that in the next meeting.
A motion on second. All in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Happy to see you fourth. See you on the twelfth.